We'll call this meeting to order, 6:36 PM. This meeting and all meetings of this council are open to public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press with the accordance of the Wisconsin statutes, so a citizen may be aware of the time, the place, and the agenda of this meeting. We'll have a roll call.
Shaney Appleby?
Here.
Bruce Brunner?
Here.
Johanna Edwards?
Here.
Nick Gunnerson?
Here.
Keith Nodowski?
Here.
Scott Rasmussen?
Here.
Thank you. We'd ask everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance led by Bruce Brunner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would look then for a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
Aye, salut.
I will second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any questions on the agenda, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I look for a motion then to approve the minutes from our regular council meeting, March 16th, 2015, and our special council meeting on April 6th, 2015.
Aye, salut.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or questions in regards to those meetings? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Citizens' appearance. We'll start out with Mr. Zaboy, library rep.
Thank you very much. First of all, I apologize, but I'm gonna leave. I have a date with some allies. Very short report today. We did replace the two furnaces. It was one of those deals where I was concerned because they picked one of the colder days to do it. They came here, I've dealt with that company before, it's modern sheet metal out of Appleton. They said, "We'll disconnect one furnace, we'll put the new furnace in, the old furnace will be working all the time, and once we get the new furnace, it'll be working, we'll take the second furnace out." They were done in less than six hours, and they had work to do up in the attic, plus put them in. So, I'm very, very, very pleased. The two furnaces ran around $6,700. They also sent us a rebate slip of $605 that the federal government is paying because it's an upgrade, we're in a ninety-plus percent efficiency. So, we're very happy and we're all set there. Now, if you have any questions, please fire away. Aye?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next thing, we'll move on. Jim Toffa?
Hi, everybody. I'm Jim Toffa from Wyegah Lake Restoration, and I'm here to get a confirmation date on your June meeting. I have to have that date for sure, so I can organize what we've got going here. I plan on having Kevin Peterson at our meeting, and Mark Corris will be the chair to have a public hearing on, from Stantec, on the use of the chemicals on the lake. It's an informational meeting, and it's required by his company to inform the public on what type of chemicals and what's going on out there. It's a requirement. So, if I could get that date from you guys, so I can line up Peterson and Mark Corris from Stantec. June works very well with those guys. But we'd like to request it at the high school, because as you can see, we've got a half a dozen people here. If it's a public hearing, then we might fill the room. Chances are probably not, though, but we need more space. So, I think that'll be a drawing card, because we plan on sending out in the mailing, to the public, notifying them. Corris is gonna take care of the town, we're gonna take care of the city, and letting them know exactly what the meeting is all about. And if we can discuss the lake district. You can kill three birds with one stone. This has to be done thirty days ahead of time, the mailing, before your meeting date. So hypothetically, if your date is June 2nd, I have to have it May 2nd. I gotta know when your, I have to send the mailing out May 2nd. So, I gotta know when your date is, your June meeting date is. And if you would, come to the high school. Thank you.
Why would you, why do you need this cities meeting for that, Jim? Why can't you just?
We're trying to kill three birds with one stone. Instead of me coming here the following month and explaining to you what the public decided and what Corris is doing out there, you can hear it from the horse's mouth.
Right.
I ain't even gonna be doing any talking.
Right.
It's gonna be Mark Corris and Kevin Peterson.
But I would think that the lake group would wanna schedule that meeting on their own, because otherwise, we're gonna have to hold our-
Well, we are scheduling it.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold our regular meeting in the high school then, so there's gonna be time, I think that would be just, you follow me? We're gonna have our meeting there-
Yeah.
-set up for that-
Yeah.
And then you're gonna have all this other stuff going on.
Well, isn't that wonderful? You'll have all those people here together. Isn't that great?
Right.
This is what we want, public involvement, don't we?
Right.
Well, let's have it.
But I don't, I don't know if they're, if you wanna go that route-
We do wanna go that route.
-when you're gonna be just talking mainly, I think you wanna concentrate on talking about the lake at that meeting.
Well, we could have a special meeting with the council there, but to go through all the other agenda?
Are you, if you're talking about coordinating with the town of Wyegah, are you asking the same of them to have a meeting that night, too?
No.
Or to hold?
No.
But they're invited?
Just the town residents, but we can throw the olive branch, you know?
Yeah, we could, we could take a look at, it's, the regular meeting would be June 15th, it'd be usually the third Monday, but because it's two months out, I mean, over the next couple of weeks, you can take a look at if you wanna have a special meeting there. Doesn't have to be June 15th, you know, it could be a special meeting, too.
No, just so I know, so I can tell Kevin Peterson and Mark Corris, 'cause he's gotta get the mailing out thirty days ahead of time.
What kind of length of time does he have?
Thirty days.
No. Length of time of his presentation and all that goes on, how long do you think that's gonna be?
That'll take-
Some of our meetings go two, two and a half hours, the way it is. We're not gonna-
Well, he's, he's appeared here, I think, twice now.
Did you hear what I said?
Yes, I did, sir.
We're not gonna go three and a half hour hours.
Half hour. He'll be there about a half hour. That only depends on how many questions you have, okay? He'll present his case, and then whatever questions you and the rest of the public have, that's what's gonna determine the length of the meeting.
The other thing we could do, too, is, you're gonna meet in May-
Yeah.
-as a city council on the third Monday, which is tentatively May 18th. Now, if you would look at June, the last week in June, there's time for maybe me to touch base with those two gentlemen that are looking at coordinating this meeting, Mark Corris and with Kevin Peterson, too.
Yeah.
There can be maybe a better report on my end on what we need to do in May, and then you get a thirty-day window from-
From there.
-there to the end of June, potentially.
Yeah, that'd be all right.
That'd be fair enough.
Why don't we do that? Because otherwise, we're looking out two, two months.
We got trouble coordinating with the school.
Jim, is this the DNR that's sponsoring it and sending out the notices and stuff?
No, this is the, we got the grant from, from the DNR, and Ted Johnson is ramrod in this, in conjunction with Mark Corris. Mark Corris is the chemical company. He's the guy that's gonna be treating the weeds.
Okay.
And it's a requirement from, by his company, to inform the public.
Yeah.
They have to inform the public on what's going on out here with chemicals, you know? Because right away, you start thinking chemicals, people start freaking out, you know?
Sure.
You figure, "Oh, boy, are the fish good to eat? Can we touch the water?" You know, you get some really wild questions, you know?
And then the, who's the DNR's lead person on this?
Ted Johnson.
That's Ted Johnson, okay. And Kevin Peterson is another person from the company?
He's the state rep for, for the state assembly.
Oh. Okay. Should we have that?
I think that should, that should be good. Maybe we'll aim for like a late June, and then if you need something outside of the thirty-day window from the city council, then you have the May 18th meeting, that-
Sure. I don't, I ain't trying to inconvenience anybody, but like I was saying-
Yep.
-this is for the public, you know, instead of me trying to explain to you what happened again, over and over again, and then for you to take it to the council again, you know, the clock is burning, time is wasted. We can't start the treatment until 2016, okay? Because we're late as it is. Nothing's gonna happen this year, okay? So, we, we can't miss this window again. If we do, it's gotta go back to 2017, and then there'll be more weed infections out there, and, you know, it's tough.
Yeah.
Like I was saying, Bruce, about the questions, the length of the meeting will only be determined by how many questions people ask.
Yeah, and I don't mind having a special meeting where we all showed up apart from a regular meeting, 'cause that can be totally distracting with, with, it's two hundred people there, it's like, we'd have to have it right away, and then carry on after.
Well, that's what I was thinking, if that's good with you guys, I mean, you know?
Well, however, everybody decides.
If you aim for late June, you get enough time there, between now and May, to coordinate on our end, whatever we need.
Yeah.
It should be good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No, 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 I'll bet you, okay. Anybody else on citizens' appearance? All right, then we'll move on to our committee reports. Finance committee?
On behalf of the finance committee, I make a motion for approval of checks 31297 through 31374 totaling $642,752.39.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the checks. Any questions or comments in regards to that? Have a roll call.
Appleby?
Aye.
Gunnerson?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Nodowski?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Carrie with all ayes.
Thank you. Anything else, Scott?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Public works?
I'd like to make a motion amending the contract with Harders to revise large item garbage pickup to every other Wednesday.
Second it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to amend the contract for Harders to revise large item garbage pickups to every other Wednesday. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick, just a quick comment. We've got in, you have the exhibit A from the contract with Harders in your packet, and when we pass that contract, it included one time per month, they'd be in town for large item pickup, every third Thursday, because we're serviced out of the Seymour hub for Harders. The Seymour trucks are now going out every other Wednesday, which in theory is double the pickup, and it's truly in every other schedule, so some months, there will be three pickups. Nothing changes in the fact that if a resident wants to get a large item picked up, they still have to contact Harders, they'd still have to pay the relevant fees. The only change here would be, instead of one Thursday a month, it would be every other Wednesday, and the every other schedule would start tomorrow, if this passes. It would be every other Wednesday from tomorrow. The best way to find out what week we're on is to just call Harders, because you have to call them anyway, and then they will let you know when they can get the pickup scheduled. I've already had a fridge picked up, so it's, it works.
So... Is there a change in the consumer's bill?
No.
No. The only thing with, like, large item pickup, right? The customer needs to request that picked up and pay it for it ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we don't have a code-infor, you know, officer and all that stuff we're talking about, but there's people that, one, two-plus years, the same item is sitting there on the side of the road. A recliner, every once in a while gets rolled over to get fresh air. You hear what I'm saying? And, um, what can we do possibly, or is that for another meeting?
Yeah.
To, like, this snow shovel in, that doesn't get done with it, you know, sometimes, it's ridiculous what I've been seeing around that.
Yeah. And that's a good point. We've been in touch with Harders on that. Now, the gentleman that's in the truck, because at every stop, they get out of the truck, and if something doesn't get picked up, it's because the Harders employee gets out, sees that it's either not on his pre-approved list, well, the regular garbage truck isn't picking up large items anymore.
Oh, right, right.
But when he's out on Tuesday, if he sees an item that's not supposed to be out, or it's not prepaid-
Yeah.
-they do have stickers, and they do have tags, that they'll tag the items.
Oh, good.
That's good. The one thing that we did request was just to get a report on that, too, on back, so when they're tagging things-
Yeah, because some of the commonality, to a certain point, it's-
Yeah.
You may have watched stuff, and you know, you-
Sure.
-it's only a certain point to where somebody's not gonna stop by and get it, you know? Pick it off the curb, kinda thing, so.
Yeah, and with the large item pickup truck, it's not coming to town to drive the streets, it's coming, and it's very targeted with a list to say, "We're going here and there."
Sure, sure.
So, the, the thing we can pick up is the, or we can add to what we're doing now, is the, the regular garbage truck hits every street every week, so, when they see things out there.
So, they're aware of it, and they're reporting, and that's good, that idea, so.
Yes. Yep. Yep.
Any other questions in regards to the large item garbage pickups? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Please make the motion for approval of option A, the quote from Backwoods Construction to repair and enclose park building.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to recommend the option quote from Backwoods Construction to repair the enclosed park building. Any questions or comments on that?
Yes, this is an open-air building right now. What we're finding with some of our open-air buildings is that the wooden posts that hold them up, the very bottom of them, are starting to rot out, and what we've been able to do with our staff is we cut off the bottom and then sort of stand them up, either with blocks or with concrete that we fill in. The problem is, that works for one, maybe two, but pretty soon, if you've got buildings that are just resting on concrete, you've gotta do something maybe more substantial. This is one of the shelters, it's by the stormwater pond. What we're looking at doing there is replacing those support beams, and with that, we added a new shelter with the brand-new restroom that was constructed, and we tore down the old restroom, which was actually the small garage to house our mowers in. So, with that, and in lieu of looking at a more substantial garage that we would build, knowing we've gotta do some repair work on the building, the thought was, let's get a quote, or a number of quotes we got last year, enclosing a building, using it as a storage building, cold storage. And the thought with the option A or option B is that Backwoods Construction had eyed up our new building and our newer restrooms, and they tried to get them to match the color scheme that the city council had approved about a year and a half ago. It's more of a toned gray with a green, and option A is a two-tone building where it's gray with a green lower on it. One of the, the thoughts that we had was, for an extra $400, we could add a second garage door. Quite honestly, we're still taking a look at whether that's something that we should do. I think it would help. Right now, the quote would be $6,600 roughly, I think it's a little over $6,600, includes one garage door. The thought is, once we start storing things in the park there, things we store in the back, if we need to get to them with only one garage door, that we'd have to empty the whole garage, just like your regular garage at home, you gotta empty the whole thing. I'm, I'm thinking that it makes sense to add that second garage door, but we'll report back maybe on that one. It's not gonna get built in a week, and my understanding is, we'll probably have a special council meeting in a week here. Touch base on that, but the base quote for option A is something that we think is going to be beneficial for the park storage.
Do you wanna add that right now? I mean, there's, I would-
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pointing to the fact that we're gonna, it would be something that we'd like to have.
If you're storing enough stuff in there where that's something that's helpful.
Yeah. And for $400, that's fine, that's fine. It should work. So, if you'd like to-
Should I rescind my second, and we can redo the motion?
You can just amend.
You're gonna amend your motion, too?
I made the motion to include a second garage door for $400.
That'll work. Thank you.
Okay, I have to ask, because we're recommending the approval of it, but it doesn't, what is the quote? What is the price?
Yep, it's-
According to the minutes here, what I see from the committee meeting, it says roughly $6,700.
Yes, so the quote is in the packet, it's, yeah, go ahead.
Is that a, is that a solid price? Is that?
Yes.
Um...
Yes, there's, in the, in the packet, there's a quote, which was, we had him originally quoted out last spring, summer. It was updated on March 9th, and it's $6,648. And then there's a down payment of $4,025, but, yeah, $6,648, and the quote, um, the garage, the second garage door would be $400, on top of that.
Okay. And we had more than one quote?
Yes.
Okay.
And significant difference.
Yes.
It was over ten?
We're looking at $10,000, yeah. Yep. Yep.
Any other questions? Comments or concerns? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you.
I have nothing else for council.
Thank you. Please fire an ambulance committee.
No action for council.
Okay. Public health relief ordinance?
No action for council.
Recreation?
No action for council.
All right. Public property purchasing committee?
I'd like to make a recommendation for the approval of purchase of approximately .71 acres of land from Presto Products at a cost of $24,000.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments in regards to that?
Yes, real quick. Two months ago, the council had authorized myself and the city attorney to negotiate for the purchase of this piece of property. It's adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant, basically where our sludge barn is, it's to the north, in the northeast, it's between the rail spur and the river. That area is going to be utilized for stormwater improvements, and We Energies, as part of their upgrade to the electrical system, is looking at moving the river crossing from over the top of the treatment plant to just north of the, and north and east of the treatment plant. So, in this area, the cost of $24,000 falls in line with the appraisal that we had completed there, so, that would be the recommendation to approve that.
Any other questions or comments on it? Uh, just an all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Anything else? Public property? Keith?
Uh, nothing else.
Okay. Planning commission, did not have a meeting. New business? I need an approval then for the beer license, class B, for six months, for James and Brian Hoftrup, for Thursday Night Men's Softball League at the Wyegah Community Park.
Aye, salut.
Second it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or concerns on this? And that has all been checked out?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor, then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next, we need a motion then to approve Arbor Day proclamation for April 24th, 2015.
Aye, salut.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments regarding that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor's report, I did attend the lake group meeting, and I know what Mr. Toffa was talking about. They did discuss that, where the chemicals there. I'm still kind of, uh, thinking about the statement there, was brought at the meeting by, um, Bob was stating that, that they wanna use chemicals now, but I guess, if I remember right back when the lake was drawn down, I think I was at a meeting where people were asking, "Well, why can't we spray them weeds now when the water's down?" But now they wanna do it after the fishing, and I guess I had, I'm one that has a concern about that, spraying it now when it's after it is, but if you could touch a little bit, Bob, I'd-
It's a completely different type of approach. It's an approach from science. When you spray the weeds when they're down, you aren't necessarily gonna take care of the problem. A lot of these weeds went into hibernation, more or less the season when we got the lake. One especially called the Curly Leaf Nopon Weed. That one, when we raised the lake again, it sprang back to life. That one comes to life before the native plants do, under the ice, and so I, I'm guessing that Santa will give you more information on it, but as soon as that ice goes out, they need to hit that weed before the native plants start growing.
Right.
And it's a different type of application, or a different type of-
For some, you have to spray in the fall, when they're in bud, so you can kill the seeds, because some of them got the seed on the top, okay? And that's the only time you can get them, then, is in the fall, when they emerge out of the water.
And the type of chemicals that they're using are very environmentally friendly.
Okay.
And approved by DNR.
I just wanted to kind of touch base, so that they knew kind of what we were, what we talked about that night. And then, of course, one of the biggest things that was at the meeting, and I'd like to share it, and I'd kinda like the lake group to just dedicate maybe one spokesperson out of this, because I attended that meeting, and I was very surprised, because an individual there said that the city had put in a new dog park. And it got into a good conversation, and Ms. Gunnerson was at the meeting, and she said, "I would think that her husband, Nick, and myself would know that we put it in there." But we, we all drove down there that night and had to see for ourselves, but all the sign says is, "Please pick up your dog, Doodoo, and have your dog on a leash." Didn't say nothing about a dog park.
Well, I think what's deceiving about that, if you're referring to Holly, I believe, is the picture of the dog there, so it looks like it's an invitation, and the trees that you're cutting down around the shoreline, I don't really necessarily agree with. Why, why is that happening? Why are those trees cut down by the old beach house?
Yeah, so there's, there's four trees there. Now, the signs themselves have been up in all of our parks as long as I've been here, so it's been two, two and a half years where it just says, "If your dog is in the park, have it on a leash." The trees from that storm-
Does it have a dog on it, pet?
Yes.
They're all the same signs.
Yeah, with a, it's like, and I hate to say the no-smoking signs, but they've got that big red X-out. I believe it's got that with the dog on it. So, that's, that's that. Now, the trees, the very closest tree to the road, and I've got, we've got pictures here, but that tree didn't have any leaves on it at all, all year, so it was full, looked like it was full, but it had died. Three other trees that are towards the back of the Peterson Park area there-
Right.
-that storm that we had in August of 2013 had torn down the trees, and there's two left there that, if we brought them down, would come down either on a building or on a fence, so we've left them there. a fence, so we've left them there. But the trees that are all there, that we've cut down, have been either dead or dying trees. And the thought is, we just had the Arbor Day proclamation. We pulled down those trees in the winter, and we're getting rid of the brush, and people have taken firewood. And the thought is, the number of trees that we took down will plant brand-new trees in that park.
Now, getting to your remark a couple of years ago, you said, uh, that the neighbors couldn't see the lake, because it, uh, can't see the forest for the trees?
I don't know if I said that, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
The neighbors were complaining it couldn't see the lake on...
All through the grass, and that's further down Park View.
And I talked to the D and R about that. You can cut that down.
Sure.
Because that was after the fact.
Oh, okay.
You know, and it, it was pre-existing, you know what I'm saying?
Yep, the, the big...
So you can clean that up.
Yeah, the big, the big concern that was passed to us was, and I think it was the fall before I started, there was a lot of repair on the, I'm trying to think of the word, but on the lake shoreline there, there was a lot of erosion control that was put in, and the thought was, if we went in and trimmed everything, they'd want us to be sure that we don't trim it down to where it's bare, because then it would defeat the purpose of trying to build up the shoreline there. That was the thought. So a lot of it closer towards the bend on the intersection of Mill and Parkview Lane there.
Yep.
That's the problem, that they identified, you know, where the plantings were. They said, "Well, we put that in there to hold the shoreline up." So, and we did, we have cut it a couple times, and, and I will probably tell you that as many people have called and complained that we should cut it, when we have cut it, we've had a couple people call and complain that we've cut it, too.
Okay, I suppose, yeah. But Bob, Van Epps and I were down, uh, had a talk...
Yep.
Several weeks ago, and Gunderson came out there. I might be mispronouncing her name, 'cause we're getting mixed up with your name.
From the lawn care, from the...
She lives by the boat launch.
Oh.
At Galen, and she was talking about all the vandalism, kids that are down there all the time. I picked up a couple of two-by-fours with nails in them. I put them off to the side, the big spike sticking out, you know, they tore apart the tow, tow rail on the pier. You know, and she says there's a lot of activity there all the time, so Van Epps and I gave her our phone numbers, and said, "If there's any problem, just call, and we'll come down and see what the heck's going on. If it's something that we can't talk to the kids about, we'll call Gary or somebody," you know?
Yeah.
But she's complaining that there's been a lot of stuff going on down there.
There's been a lot of damage to your handicap accessibility, that that's what they guard rails for. And one of our, at least my personal hopes in the future, I've worked with the city, to reestablish that as a fishing area along with the North Shore, and that's probably why some of that concern is expressed, that they'll ask me from people like I who are ignorant of whether or not there was a dog park. You know, I personally wanna see that reestablished as a fishing area, so everybody can use it along that North Shore each to the dam, but that's my personal, my personal goals.
I can add real quick, too. Closer to the water on the western edge of that little piece of the park, there were some, there's brush in there that we had pulled out. So we did pull out dead trees, or cut down some dead trees, but there was a lot of brush that had turned into sort of a mini yard waste site. A lot of people would cut the grass and just dump it.
Oh, is that right?
And along the lake, so when we cleared that out of there, now it's wide open, and the hope is that you prevent people from going down in there just dumping stuff, so.
Maybe we just need to get some signs.
Well, it's, where the dumpage was, was not really, was not really a city's property, 'cause we put the fence in there, but where the dumping was, was on the, actually on the other side, but it was on the...
It's right there, yeah.
Okay.
Let me ask a question, too, about the, the dog. The dog, you know, the perception that there was dog park or whatnot. You've seen the dog waste stations periodically around town.
Right, right.
I suppose somebody from out of town could walk up to, across from the library and see that and say, "Oh, it's a dog park."
Right.
It doesn't say that, and it's not, but they're, they're periodically around town, and I use them...
Well, that was the perception, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, but...
Most dog parks are enclosed, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, I suppose you could see that as, you know, if you didn't know, but it's not, but...
Right.
But...
Well, we cleared the air, so.
So, dogs are allowed in the park, but it's not a dog park?
On, on location, on location, they have to clean up after...
Like anywhere, yeah.
Right. Okay, and then, at this time, I would like to present an award of appreciation to Johanna Edwards for the appreciation for two years and dedication and professional service, being a valuable contributor to the city of Wyegah as a District III alderperson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys want a picture to go?
Well... Well, not if my tour...
Well...
Whatever.
We can do it after we take a break from... All right, then we'll move on to administrator's report. Two minutes.
Yep, it'll be less than that. Just a real quick report. A lot of the big projects we've got going in town, obviously AgriPERS got their project. We've been working with them. We are working on some of the infrastructure upgrades for them. Larger sanitary sewer main along Third Avenue that we've bid out for. We haven't awarded the bids yet, but we did have a meeting last night. It's a joint public works and finance meeting where we looked at the three contracts that we put out for bid, and the three contracts relate to utility and roadway construction. The second contract was for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, which is essentially the project that we had bid out a year and a half ago. And when the rumblings of AgriPERS upgrade had come around, they had asked that we hold off on the project, so we rejected the bids. Now, we've put it back out. We did get the bids. The low bidder was Myron for just over $5 million. That's about a 10% increase from a year and a half ago, when it was about 4.4 million for the construction. The joint finance committee, public works committee, didn't make any recommendations. We just reviewed the bids last night. And then the third contract that we had put out was for the municipal building, and that's the official name that's been out on the street for bids, and that is the City Hall Community Center renovation for downtown. We did run over some of the construction bids last night. There are two bidders that are very close, Immel and Myron, but there are a lot of variable costs that are out there related to technology, security, furniture. Those are all things that the city did not bid out, but still has the option to scale those up or down according to your wishes in the next couple weeks. That project, as we reported on last night, is looking to be in the neighborhood of $3 million. But again, there are some variable costs that are out there, so, and again, no action was taken last night. It was just a review to get that out to the public that we, we've got those contracts out there, so. Been pretty busy with those, those contracts, and, and I would expect we're probably looking at a couple extra meetings in the next couple weeks to make some of those decisions on the variables. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Okay.
Somebody should have timed it.
Please, Chief.
Check it out on YouTube, time it up.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things for you. We have, uh, spring has sprung, and the weather's gotten nice, and it did get nice, and our turn is gonna get sore. Calls for service are up. We have 704 calls for service as of today. We have a couple of 19 traffic accidents, 74 bill of business checks, 17 thefts, and those are what's on the rise, as they usually are in the spring, and 14 welfare checks. The only other significant operational event that we had happen was on March 28th. Adam was on routine patrol, and the engine in the short bus, is what we call it, but the Ford, our newest Ford, failed. He called me from Highway 10, it was smoking, and of course, I said, "Get out of the car and tow it in," and she did. Mitchell looked at it the next day. They determined that the engine was a goner, which fortunately for us in this case, was able to be towed up to Broadway in Green Bay, and a new motor was put in at no cost to us, because it was under warranty. So that's back in service and running fine in Green Bay. Last week, I went to an executive leadership class in Milwaukee, and Brandon will be going here in another week, where the Attorney General, Assistant Attorney General, is giving us some new ideas on how to do, deal with bullies, cyberbullies, stalking, domestic abuse, sexual assault, and strangulation. So that was good. The one bad part about it is, they told us that the Drug Enforcement Administration, I had known this for a while, canceled the drug takeback program. They reran twice a year, which is pretty important. Fortunately for us, the Department of Justice decided to take it back over, so they're going to allow us to collect twice a year on those days, May 16 being one of them, and keep our drug collection box down at City Hall, and that thing, tough to, if anybody wants to come and see how many drugs are coming out the street in this little town, we have boxes and boxes of it. I emptied it today when it was folded. So if anybody wants to put that on their calendar, if they have anything, you can bring it down on the 16th, otherwise Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30. That's all there.
So that new, um, motor starts a new warranty from that time with that motor. I mean, the rest of the vehicle has whatever, but this...
The motor's 100,000-powered train, and it's typical warranties.
Right, and, but this motor, of course, it starts over again, yeah, kinda thing, yeah.
What was the reasoning for going out?
That it blew?
Yeah.
I don't know. Did you, I don't know, did you ever get an answer?
There was an internal failure where all the antifreeze mixed with that oil.
Okay.
Something on loose, and...
I guess, Jerry, I have a question. It's, cargo was down. I don't know about the rest of the council people, but I guess I'm a little upset because it wasn't reported until now, that you're telling, I take it, you're telling us. I found out April 7th, when Pat sent me the letter that Brandon had put out to the other patrolman, and there was not a council person, just Pat was the only one that was notified that Broadway had the vehicle, and that he was trying to get an engine as soon as it was coming. I would think that maybe on the 29th, maybe the police committee, the mayor should have probably been aware, 'cause what would've happened if they would've said, "There's no warranty on this"? Who's gonna make the decision to do whatever we're gonna do with that car?
Well, we didn't. We found out it was under warranty, and we got it fixed.
Right, but I think we...
If it would've been this case where it wasn't under warranty, then we would've had addressed it.
Right, but I think we still should've been aware that a pretty expensive vehicle or piece of equipment for the city should've been notified that it was down.
Okay.
And, so I mean, it was, so what, what were we down, three weeks?
Just about.
Roughly, okay. My, my next question would be, is how did we get along with two squads? How did that work?
We got by. We had some challenges with transports and things, but we got by.
Okay. Okay. We have nothing, then, anything else from...
Thank you for your report.
Then we will move on to any other such matters that are authorized by law?
Should be none.
Should be none, all right. Then we will adjourn to the reorganizational meeting.
Make a motion.
Do I need a motion to do that?
Yes, please.
Motion by Gunderson?
Second.
By Rasmussen? Any questions or comments adjourning to that? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
719.
719. We'll take a short break to get reorganized.